Welcome, everybody, to the School Board's special meeting and study session for today, September 23rd, 2024. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, for roll call, all six members are present. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda in a second.
So may.
By Director Bullion.
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0. The first item on our, on our meeting is the legislative session update. We have with us Representative Ben Bakberg and Representative Jessica Hansen. If you both will stand up to the podium, and I understand that you'll be giving a legislative update, no board action is requested.
All right. I need to, Ben Bakberg, I have the privilege to represent the Prior Lake portion of the district. So, in my normal job, I'm a middle school principal. Education is, is one of my top priorities, obviously, legislatively. So, thank you for the, the chance to come in and, and just give you a very brief update. And, you know, in terms of, I could talk about a lot of different things. But, when I've been coming and doing these legislative updates, I want to talk about something that doesn't get a lot of attention, and that's some of the...
Oh, I've, I've never been accused of not being able to be loud, so that's... But I want to, when I do these legislative updates, I want to take an opportunity and, and highlight what really doesn't get talked about, and some of the bipartisan work that, that happened in this last session. So, there are two things that I want to highlight. The first is, is some model policy around cellphone legislation. So, there was a bill passed that we worked together across the aisle, just because of the impact that, that these things are having on kids. And, I saw it, I, I've seen it as a dad, I've seen it as a principal, and I've seen it, you know, also legislatively. And, really, what, what it does is it, the, it gives schools the, or it gives the, the association, some of the principals' associations, some time to draft model policy, but it really empowers schools to, to put in place some parameters around cellphones. Now, honestly, from, from my principal lens, it didn't change what we did on a day-to-day basis, really, at all. We just were more consistent with it, and we were, we were being very, very clear with those pieces. So, that was a really positive piece. There's a lot of information out there, if you're wondering, where you can go about, about, you know, cellphones and, and the impact on kids. The other thing, and I actually am coming from a meeting as a result of, of the second bipartisan work, and it's really around attendance and truancy. So, Representative Heather Keeler and I, you know, we see the world very differently on a whole host of topics, but when it comes to kids, we have a lot of common interests. So, we were working together in education policy, and she was presenting a bill about an idea that she had around attendance. And, and it really sparked a conversation. And, and she's, you know, we were, she and I were having a conversation like this, and she said, "You know what, Ben? Why don't we just have a conversation later offline?" And then that conversation led to her taking a bill that I actually drafted in the 23 session about an attendance, and attendance and truancy study group, to really get at what is the issue? Why are kids not coming to school? And, and if you talk to educators, they'll tell you, "There is no one issue." It doesn't take a study group to figure that out. But then what are the solutions that we can control to be able to address those issues for kids? So, we had one of our, our study group sessions today. We heard from the department, some national experts, and then actually, the Shakopee Schools and Scott County are doing some really, really good work. So, you know, people talked longer than we anticipated, so they got bumped to the next meeting. But there are some really good things happening right here in Scott County that we can highlight, and then make things better for kids. But I, I think what I would just like to say is thank you. Thank you for serving. As a school board member, it's not an easy job. And then thank you for advocating. You, you know, each of you, in your own way, have reached out and had conversations with me, and I think you all have my cellphone. If you don't, I can give it to you. But, I would just say, continue to advocate for the needs of Prior Lake Schools. You are the voice, and we need to be listening to you. So, thank you. Thank you for the work you do, and thank you for your advocacy. With that, turn it over to Representative Hansen.
Thank you, Representative Bakberg. Welcome to everybody. I always say it's really great to see so many people filling rooms like this, because these are things that affect our kids' lives. And so, the decisions that you make literally can have impacts for generations. So, thank you for doing that. I'm Jess Hansen. I represent District 55A. That's all of the city of Savage in the northwest part of Burnsville. So, the larger part of my district is the 191 district, and then the rest of the district is the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I'm really excited that we have made record investments in education funding. I think that was the biggest question I personally heard from a lot of folks around the district, on boards across the state, is making sure that we're increasing those, the formula, making sure we're getting more money to schools, so that you aren't having to do as many referendums and things like that, but also supporting your work and getting more of those referendums across the line, as that money actually gets into your hands. So, I think that's a really exciting piece. We know education has been underfunded for a decade or more, and so catching up on that is really important. I'm obviously really excited to see the closing of the gaps in the Special Education Cross-Subsidy, and doubling the funding for the English Language Learner Funds as well. As we go into next session, closing that Special Education Cross-Subsidy remains a priority for me. As a fam, as a person with a disability, with kids that have special needs, and tons of friends and people in the district who need that, I think that continues to be a question I hear from parents, is continuing to make sure those kids have the services they need to get the best education possible in the ways that they need. We have obviously a lot of other policy bills that pass. I think the cellphone bill is a really big, important one, making sure that you guys are empowered to have those model policies in place. My son is one of the kids who's asked, "Why can they take my cellphone?" And so, kids are talking about it, parents are talking about it. It does seem to be making an impact, so glad to hear about that. Obviously, we have had conversations on this board and with the community in the past about some of, like bullying bills, and it's continuing to expand that work. I've been working with the governor's office on that as well, continuing to stay in conversation about how we can support students who are being disproportionately impacted by bullying, and how we can support schools and districts in implementing policies that support that as well, too. So, I could obviously go on and on and on, but I do think that as we continue to move forward, those gaps I mentioned, continuing to support the Special Education Cross-Subsidy and closing that is a really important piece, but most importantly, just making sure we're supporting your work. Your hands-on and being there for you is really a high priority for us, and any assistance we can provide, we're absolutely happy to do that. I don't want to take up too much time here. I could probably go on and on, but thank you all for your work, and thank you, everybody, for being here today.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Next on the agenda is the appointment of a school board director due to the resignation of Board Director Enrique Valesquez, which was effective as of September 13th. In your board packets are the process guidelines for the new appointment process. I'm going to read them out loud first. The candidate responses may be subject to redaction based upon the content and data privacy laws prior to release in public data requests. So, I'm just letting everyone know that it may take some time if you do that. The board members are not allowed to have digital reproduction of the materials during the process, and that the candidate responses will be collected and returned to our election clerk after the final vote. The ballots have been pre-printed with assigned board member names, and the candidates in each round of the balloting and the vote count tally will be displayed on these projection screens, so everyone has the same information at the same time. The ballot, the ballots will be collect, will be first collected or sent to Vice Chair Bullion and Treasurer Julie Bernick, and validated by the election clerk. Per the board-approved process, on September 9th, there will be no discussion of the candidate qualifications until the motion for the final vote has been made and seconded. And the guidelines for the motion, of, guidelines for motion discussion are that only candidates in the final round will be discussed, only strengths or positive attributes of each may be discussed, and there will be no quoting selectively from the candidate responses during the discussion pursuant to the first bullet that I stated. In the voting process, board members will be provided the candidate responses and the first ballot when we start, and that will be distributed by our election clerk. Appropriate time will be allotted to review each of the candidate responses. Board members will then choose two candidates until the final round, and the final round is determined by the following: Only two candidates remain, or two successive rounds result in the same candidates remaining. After the final round, a motion will be called by the chair to begin the discussion and the motion for the resolution, and then we will finalize it with a vote. Are there any questions?
Yes, Chair Franz, I have a question. I'm just wondering, you know, we discussed the, some of the process guidelines in our September 9th meeting, but we never discussed the voting guidelines. So, can you help me understand how the voting guidelines were developed?
Well, after the application deadline, and we saw that 14 candidates were on there, we began discussion of the process that would both be expeditious as well as fair. And we called into consultation our district administration, because they have quite a bit of experience in this, as well as some of them are specialized in it. And so, we also then contacted the Minnesota School Board Association. Through administration, legal was consulted as needed. And then, and finally, the process was also sent to Director Bullion, who had her chance to ask independent questions of the administration. And then we finalized it, I think on Friday evening, and then it was sent out in the board packet on Saturday.
Thank you. When you're referring to "we," can you clarify that? Who's "we"?
District Administration, MSBA, Vice Chair Bullion, and through the administration legal.
Okay, thank you. So, my question is, is why are we voting for two candidates up until the final round, when there is only one board vacancy?
That was a decision that was made through consultation with administration to make sure that we stayed true to a somewhat ranked choice voting, even though both candidates will have equal votes each way. That allows people to actually reread and discuss and see the results as they're going forward in the tally. And I would refer to the multiple discussions we had with the MSBA, as well as district administration, on that process to make sure it was fair and equitable.
Well, I appreciate and I understand that ranked choice voting is used in certain cities within the state of Minnesota. Our election system here in Scott County, we use traditional voting method, and there is only one vacant seat, where you would typically cast one vote. We do not use rank choice voting. So, why, why do you feel that using ranked choice voting in this method with our school district is appropriate, when we typically use traditional voting methods in Scott County, and that's how every single board member sitting at this board was voting into, was voted onto this board, is by our traditional mo, modes of, or method of voting versus ranked choice voting?
I believe I already answered that question.
No, I'm trying to really understand that. I mean, this is a...
Well, first of all, we're not Scott County. First of all, this isn't an election, it's appointment process. And we did go through various processes with administration and took advice from them, and took advice from MSBA based upon the number of candidates.
So, do we have full board alignment to use ranked choice voting in this process? Is that what I'm hearing here? Or, I don't believe we discuss that as a board, so...
The way I understand it, and maybe it's a misunderstanding on my part, is that it's not actually ranked choice voting. The two, when we're submitting our ballots each round, until we get down to the final round, where you, where we will select one, it's two equal votes. It's not a one or a two. That's the way I understand it. And, in my conversations with MSBA, they actually encourage, with the amount of candidates, they encouraged each beginning rounds to have the board members select two, both having equal weight. So, it is not, there's no difference in weighting as ranked choice does. So, I don't know that it's actually ranked choice voting. It is us selecting our top two candidates. They will be weighted equally, and then once we get to a, a place where there is either down to two, or we have a unanimous vote, that's when the discussion or motion to appoint will be, be made.
Okay, I appreciate that. I've talked to other districts in the state, and they've done a similar process with 14 candidates as well. And they elected one candidate, or selected one candidate, because there's one vacant spot. So, that's why I'm asking the questions. If that's the will of the board, and that was decided prior to this meeting, then we'll proceed forward with that. I don't necessarily agree with it, but...
I have another questions also. It was understand, it was understood at the 9-9 meeting that we would, that there would be no discussion. And it was actually mentioned multiple times by Director Crosby, where she stated, "The vote is the discussion." And now it looks like we're implementing discussion once we get to the final two candidates. Is that correct?
We're implementing discussion when we come to the motion for resolution. The process stated we weren't going to discuss the candidates while we were voting for them.
And I'm a little confused by that, because in your guidelines, it says that the final round is to be determined by, when only two candidates remain. And then when you go up to the top, it says that there will be discussion at, when we hit the final vote. So, I'm, I'm just a little confused by the language, so, of the final vote and the discussion.
Yeah, and I probably misstated in the last meeting what "no discussion" meant, because to your point that you brought up a few times, every motion is entitled to a discussion.
I brought that up when I said that, when we made the, when you made the vote, the vote was on the process. And I actually replied that to you in writing, when you asked the question.
So, the motion to appoint would then open up a discussion for us to...
That I understand, when it comes to one candidate, the motion to appoint. But the way I'm reading this, it says, under number five, under voting, "The final round is determined by the following: Only two candidates remain." So, will there be discussion after, once there's two candidates remain, or will there only be discussion once the final appointment is made? That's why I was confused with the way it's written on here.
And what I explained is the final round of the ballot, which we only choose, excuse me, one candidate each, okay, is determined when we have two candidates left, or we've had two successive rounds of the same candidates. And then we go from the two vote each, or two choice each, to one. And then after the one vote, then we open up for motion.
Correct. But that's different than what's stated on here, if I'm reading it correctly, because it says the final round is determined. But if that's the way it is, then that's fine. So, we're all clear that there will be no discussion as per the motion, unless we amend it, that there was, there'll be no discussion until we get to the very final candidate, and we make the motion to adopt that final candidate. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I'm clear on the understanding of this.
So, what I replied to you in writing was that, once we make the motion to make the resolution and vote on the resolution for who the final candidate is, per Robert's rules, that is a major motion and debate is allowed.
That's what I thought. Thank you. That's, that's why I emailed into you, asking that question as well. So, thank you. Okay, I'm clear now. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, or...? Okay. Are we ready to get started? Okay. So, the election clerk will pass out the packets. And, just to let the viewing audience know, the packets are fairly robust, so it may take up to 20 or 30 minutes or more for each of the board members to read through the entire packet. So, sorry that you're all sitting here watching paint dry, but, um... But I want to make sure enough time is allotted to each board member.
Chair Franz and Board Directors, pardon the interruption. Just want to be clear on something. Make sure that as you're talking, that your mics are turned on. We're having some audio issues. You can obviously turn them off right now, but when we come back to discuss, I guess we're having some issues with that. So, make sure the mic is close to your mouth, and that it's on. And just FYI to the community as well, we're picking, we can pick up conversation and, on that. So, if you do want to process a little bit, I would just ask that you can maybe just step outside those doors, because the mics are actually pretty, pretty hot tonight, and so they're picking up a lot of conversation. So, just step outside if you want to have a deeper conversation. Thank you.
[coughs]
Are all board members ready? Hand in your ballots, please, to Vice Chair Bullion or Julie, or Director Burnick.
Did someone not vote for two, or someone vote for?
Yeah, someone just voted for one.
Okay.
Twice.
Yeah, that isn't, we have to vote for two.
You have to vote for two.
Yes.
The person's names aren't there.
Yes.
So how do we?
Just give it back. We have to vote for two.
Yes.
While you're determining how I can vote, I cast my vote for two.
Two separate people. Two separate candidates.
That wasn't in the rules, though. Well, it's not in the rules. I'd like these votes cast for the two that I submitted on. And there's nothing in the rules that says I can't do that, so. Unless you're making the rules up as you go, but we.
We will not wait one with the double vote. The whole purpose of having two separate candidates chosen at each time was to balance it out, not have weighted voting.
But that's you're making the rules up there.
So it only counts for one?
No.
Okay, we're fine.
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
You're bringing up attached votes.
Okay, well, we get then one vote, not, we're not waiting it, yeah, okay.
You can count it twice, it's count it once. Okay. That makes sense. You don't have to go back.
Um, no. I'm happy how I voted.
Yeah, then we have the exact same.
Okay.
That's perfect. And then does she want those too?
This is probably unclear.
Ours match.
Okay, while we're waiting, the election clerk is going to make a final tally. And then on the screens here, you, any, any one candidate that received zero votes will not appear on the next round. And we will go to the next round of, of casting our ballots.
Chair Francis, I just want to clarify something. Are we going, is Martha going to be reading the votes for each board director from each round? As I was under the understanding that board, our board votes are public. As I was under the understanding that our board votes are public, just like you read, you three read our votes. My understanding is that our votes are public and they should be announced.
No, we never said that, and that wasn't in our motion either. Until the final round, where we vote for one and then we do the motion. That's the only time we discuss. But the individual votes and how we voted is not open to the public.
Okay, we're a public board, so my understanding is that all votes have to be public.
They will be if someone does a data request. And that was approved by the MSBA.
That's again different than how I've been advised by other boards, but we will proceed. Thank you.
Welcome. So I'm going to ask for a motion in a second to start the resolution and the discussion. By Director Bullion, I mean Director Crosby.
Second.
Second by Director Burnick. Okay. Any discussion?
I'd just like to put forth that, to thank everyone who was interested and that took the time to fill this out thoroughly, and it was very wonderful to have this much interest in the board. And I also, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you for everyone who submitted an application and really took some time with this and really appreciate it. And I look forward to working with the future board member.
I would like to echo that as well. I'm not answering. And I would add to that, I personally learned a lot by reading all the applications. And I would encourage, I mean, the public to, you all have a chance to vote for, in November, get to know everybody. I mean, there are some amazingly strong individuals that I don't think there was a bad choice out there. I mean, there are some really strong people that are definitely, have their heart and soul into our district, so I really enjoyed reading all that. So thank you for applying.
Yeah, I'll echo the gratitude in the people who have put their name in the hat. Also, just want to say heartfelt thank you to each of them because the, it just shows that the passion for our district, the importance of the work done by the board, I really appreciate. that the passion for our district, the importance of the work done by the board, I really appreciate the interest and the, yeah, what every, what you all said. I'm stumbling over the words, but, you know, to have that many people put their name in the hat, it, it shows that we have a community that cares about our district, and that it's shown there. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It was really impressive to read through all the applicants, and I would echo what Director Burnick said, and also thank you for your patience tonight, to the audience members, for all those who are attending, for waiting as we read through all those applications, so, and thank you for all, everyone's involvement in the district, for those who applied, who those who are here, and everyone who cares so deeply about our district. So, thank you.
I'll conclude by saying we had some incredibly strong candidates, and I appreciate people putting their names in to spend the time on our board. I really appreciate it. Okay, are we ready for the resolution? Okay. I'm gonna read the whole resolution and then call for the votes at the end. Pursuant to due call and notice thereof, a special meeting of the Board of, the School Board of Independent School District 719, Prior Lake, Minnesota, was held on the 23rd day of September 2024 at 6:00 PM. The following members were present: Director Olstad, Director Crosby, Director Burnick, Director Bullion, Director France, and Director Atkinson. The following resolution was moved by Directors Crosby and Burnick. Whereas a vacancy exists in the school, in the, in the office of the School Board, member with a term expiring on the first Monday in January 2027, and whereas the vacancy occurred less than 90 days prior to the first Tuesday, after the first Monday in November, in the first or second year of the vacant term, therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, Independent School District 719, State of Minnesota, as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 123B dot 09 subdivision B, Dan White, Daniel White? Okay. Dan White is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and serve until a successor is elected and qualified. The appointment shall be effective 30 days after the adoption of this resolution unless a valid petition to reject the appointee is filed with the School District Clerk pursuant to Minnesota Statutes Section 123B dot 09 subdivision 5BB within that 30-day time period. The vote on adoption of the resolution is as follows. Ayes? Oh, this is a roll call, sorry. Director Olstad?
Aye.
Director Crosby?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Atkinson?
Aye.
An aye, so the ayes have it as six, nays are zero, absent is zero, and whereupon said resolution is declared and duly adopted. Okay. On to the next item, now that all the excitement is, is calming down, and we have the exciting certification of the 2023-2024 preliminary levy. Director Frederiksen?
Thank you, Chair Franz. Directors, Superintendent, we're asking you to vote tonight to do the, approve the maximum amount of the preliminary levy certification. This is, again, just the preliminary amount. We will have conversations in the next two months before the final vote at the December board meeting. I apologize for all of the revisions. There are still making changes with Department of Education. There's been a couple snafus. They hadn't gotten all of the voluntary pre-K numbers in for those districts that received voluntary pre-K slots, and they finally got them in Thursday afternoon, which then changed the report because they are included in the general education portion, so we had to make some adjustments. I anticipate there may be a couple minor things between now and when we finalize the levy in December, but this should be very close to what it'll look like barring the levy vote in November. I can answer any questions you may have.
Before we start the discussion, can I ask for a motion in a second on the certification of the levy?
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. Okay. Questions? Okay, I have a question. Director Frederiksen, I know that they've made a lot of changes to the language, but is there any substantive thing that we're still, that is still outstanding?
There should not be. The changes that have been made in the last week have just been adjustments to the lease levy and long-term facilities maintenance, and they're mostly adjustments from the previous two years. The actual amounts for the current year haven't changed, so they're just getting final numbers in, because some of these numbers are based on adjusted net tax capacity and some other things that are just constantly getting tweaked a little bit. So I don't see any really substantive things that are gonna look different in the next month.
Any questions from the board?
I just have a question. So why did it go down this year? Just out of curiosity.
Most of these are based on enrollment. There's factors in the enrollment, and then also we didn't have the, the, last year, as you recall, the adjusted net tax capacity significantly increased. It didn't increase that much this year, so most of the changes are just related to formulas on the declining enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions, I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0. Next on the item, we have several personnel items. I'm gonna hand this over to Director Herman, and each one of these does require board action. So on the first one, Director Herman?
Thank you, Chair Franz. Members of the board, the first one is a request to take three of our unfilled noon supervisor positions and convert them to be a 1.0 student support position to help with the enrollment increases in class sizes at Jeffers Pond. It's a cost-neutral request.
I need a motion in a second?
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
Second by Director Burnick. Any questions for Director Herman?
I did have one. I'm curious as to why you feel the vacancies haven't been filled, if anybody's volunteered at this, in lunchrooms, it's a hoot, and I really recommend it to everyone. It's hilarious and fun, and you get to have so many great conversations. I'm just, I just, I, with the parent volunteers who are giving their time to, to fill these vacancies right now, I'm just worried that that's not very sustainable. I love it, but I don't know how sustainable it is, and I didn't know if you had any kind of inkling as to why we can't, realize you can't speak for everyone in the world, but why you feel like these are not being filled?
Director Olstad, members of the board, in general, any part-time FTE is difficult to find and fill, especially in the middle-of-the-day FTE. That's only 2.5 hours or 2.75 hours at the classification and rate that these positions are at. They're just extremely difficult positions to fill. We've had more success when we've combined them with kids' co-assistant positions and made them a kids' co-plus noon supervisor so that they reach a full-time status and benefit eligibility, but unfortunately with the resources and the staffing that we have available within the system, we can't afford to do that for all, so the ones that we have have been wildly successful. We haven't been able to fill the part-time positions in all the different locations, and while the, the parent volunteers, I agree, may not be sustainable, the, in collaboration with the elementary principals, we all agreed that the refocusing these resources within the limited resources that we have available to the classroom was a more preferable option than continue to try to recruit for the noon supervisors.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. I need a first and a second motion for this. Did I already that? Oh, sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0. And the next one, the additional staffing for 24-25. Again, Director Herman, but first I'm gonna ask for that motion and second up front.
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
Second by Director Olstad. Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board, we are requesting three FTE and student tutor opportunity for our students to help tutor our own students during Laker time or during the middle school level at the end of the day. This is a wonderful opportunity and just a, a plug to our MinCaps Ed Program Pathway staff. We were able to go over, have a presentation with them last week before their HR day and plug this opportunity, and there's some interest, and those students are absolutely amazing, and it was a very wonderful way to fill, fill my bucket at least. But in regards to this, we're requesting three student tutor FTEs to have an opportunity for our students to help tutor other students. This will be covered by the Achievement Integration Plan, and funding is allocated for this, for these roles.
Any questions?
I have a question. Have we, have we done this before? Have we offered this before?
Director Bullion, I am not aware if we have. If it's been in the past, that's further than, than my history here. I do know this has been done in other, in other districts, and Director Olk has experience in creating these programs in other districts that he has found to be very successful.
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the students.
Yeah, and I'd just like to radiate, I'm really excited to see this. I know this is something that, it was an idea that I brought up when we were discussing the ANI grant, so I'm, I'm really excited to see this. Have we, I, I've heard a lot of, I've had certain students mention to me that they would like to do volunteer work, volunteer mentoring, tutoring. I'm assuming, obviously, they'll apply for these positions, but could this possibly lead to creating some sort of volunteer program in our district, or is that out of scope?
Director Atkinson, members of the board, from my perspective, there's nothing that would limit us from being able to do that besides the staffing and resource to organize that. As far as that's, if that's being considered or not, that would not be under my domain, so I don't know how to respond to that specifically, but Dr. Edwards, do you?
I do know that, that sometimes is in place at the high school with our National Honor Society students specifically, beyond, expanded beyond that group of students. I'm not aware of systematic programming around that.
And these applications will be online, so any student can apply for them?
Director Atkinson, members of the board, and members of the community, yes, all of our openings are posted on our website under Join Our Team, including this position is available to our students, and any, anyone that you know that may be interested, please encourage them to apply.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0. And the next one, additional staffing for 24-25 from the child nutrition cashier. I need a motion in a second?
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
Second by Director Crosby. Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board, this request is coming from the Child Nutrition O2 Food Services Fund. With an increase of 15% in the breakfast being served at Ola de Lago, they're in need of an additional 30 minutes a day for a cashier to come in to relieve the manager from performing those duties and focus on the manager role for the rest of the day. This is covered by the O2 fund.
Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0. And then the last, second to last thing, I believe, is the agreements and terms and conditions of employment for the 2024-2026 contracts here, or people, personnel.
Chair Franz, would you like to motion first?
Oh, yes. I just wanted to make sure I had the description correct first. I need a first and a second motion.
So made.
Olstad and Bullion, Director Olstad and Bullion. Okay.
Chair Franz, members of the board, before you, you have the agreements and terms and conditions, along with the track change contracts that were sent to you for the following four groups. The American Indian Education Coordinator with a market adjustment based off of the market research that we had solicited, the cultural liaisons with the market adjustment, with the, the market analysis that we had solicited. Both of those are within the board parameters that were approved by the board, and then the technology field staff and the technology district staff combining those contracts and meeting within the board-approved parameters as well. The details of those settlements are outlined in the memo.
Okay. Any questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0. And then the next one is the REED Act memorandum. We discussed this last time at the last session with the actual training hours and completion requirements in our last board meeting. I need a motion in a second for this.
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
Second by Director Crosby. And Director Herman, do you want to give us another review of this?
Chair Franz, members of the board, this is the memorandum of understanding that we had referred to last board meeting, where we had continued our work with the teachers' union, and first, just want to pause for a second to thank their team, not only for their work on this MOU with our district, but also for all the work last year helping to collaborate and make a plan for this year to implement the REED Act. Very successful collaboration and really great ideas exchanged back and forth, so I just want to thank them for their time and dedication to that, including the dedication to work on this memorandum of understanding that is required by statute for utilization of these funds. So before, before you is an agreement between the union and the district on how to utilize the funds, the hours that will be, that will be the first year, credit recognition, proof of completion, and then the contingency for year two.
Any questions? Director Herman, I had one question. I know that the initial requirement for training and what they thought it would be was actually more after we sent the first instructors through there. They actually elevated it. Is there any chance that we are going to come back with needed, with more needed hours?
Chair Franz, members of the board, this MOU takes into consideration the total anticipated hours of 57, but the first year, the first four modules, the anticipated time from the group that worked on this is 28 hours. So that was in consultation with the individuals that went through the training.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. We've, we've heard about the unfunded mandates that come with this, the REED Act. Is there any, how do you say, quantitative data that tells us how much this professional development will cost versus the funding that we received and what the gap is? And I apologize, I didn't submit that commission, that question ahead of time, but it's, it just popped in the top of my mind as we're hearing about unfunded mandates and how much funding we received for the REED Act. Do you have the number of how much we received? I'm just curious what the gap is of how much we, you know, our, you know, how much our district, the cost of our district.
Sorry, that got really loud. Director Atkinson, members of the board, I don't have that analysis and the cost comparison in front of me, but we would be happy to work as a team and get that back to you. I believe the amount that we received was $36 in some sense.
Yeah, we, there's two different, there's the REED Act incentive aid and then the REED Act for the professional development. One of them is $36, one's $39. So it's about around $330,000 that we're gonna get for the professional development. I don't know that we know yet what the total cost is gonna be. I mean, this year, we've got it covered with the professional development days, but we're gonna have, if you don't spend it this year, you put it in a designated reserve for next year, and we'll see what, what our needs are for that.
So does this memorandum of understanding cover, is, is that what you're saying? It does cover what we received in funding? Is that what you're saying, or? Like, the way it's written, is what I'm trying to understand.
Director Atkinson, I believe what I'm hearing in your question is, does, does the funds that we've received fully cover the MOU that we're presenting to you today?
Correct.
The MOU that we're presenting to you today includes a dedicated time during our already contract time with our teachers. So the, a cost above and beyond is really gonna depend on how many of our teachers are on a leave of absence, that is unpaid leave of absence, that we have to time that is unpaid leave of absence that we have to time card for, the amount of individuals that we time-carded for to, to go through the program in advance. And then any of our staff that, that join us later on, like long-term subs, a new hires next year that we'll have to catch up and get on board with. So I'm happy to work with the team and create an analysis around that and send that out to the full board, just not data I have in front of me right now. But we have looked at the overall data of how much money we have received versus how much, how many hours it is versus the average hourly rate of a teacher. I just unfortunately don't have that in front of me right now.
That's okay. I appreciate you answering the question. That, that helps me understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I am going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes 6-0. Next, we have candidates for employment. And I need a motion and a second.
So made.
Directors Atkinson and Bullion? Director Herman?
Chair Franz, members of the board, the information for candidates for hire included in your board packet, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0. And then we have two district retirements, Becky Pint, who's been an administrative assistant at the high school for 18 years, and Charles Rotzleff, who's been part of our outside maintenance for 13 years of service. So we thank them very much for that, and I need a motion and a second for the approval of the retirements.
So made.
By Director Bullion?
Second.
I'm sorry. By Director Burnick? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0. Okay, and then the next, we have resignations and terminations. I need a, a motion and a second for that.
So made.
By Director Olstad?
Second.
Second by Burnick. Any questions for Director Herman? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 6-0. And next, we are going to adjourn and transition to a study session. I am going to ask, after we take the motion to adjourn, to allow probably up to a 10-minute break for board members and the audience to actually get up and stretch their legs. So I need a motion and a second to adjourn?
So made.
So made.
By Director Bullion? Second, who second it?
Second.
A second by Director Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. This mo, this meeting is adjourned.